Okay, welcome everyone. This is Mayor Commission Work Session. It is January 7th and it's 10:16 a.m. Feels like we've just been here, right? Okay, we're gonna start out with, number one, plans for Flagler Drive north of Palm Beach Memorial Bridge. Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there plans to do any work to do a lane elimination for this area?
We're developing a project at this location. At this time, we don't have any plans until we do data collection. And, you know, part of the bicycle master plan is to continue a two-way psychotrac for the full length along the waterfront. So if we're, we may have to make some changes to the typical section. But before that, before we even develop it into a capital improvement plan, we are looking into, you know, traffic projection of that area to see if we can do anything. So, right now, we're still, we have a consultant onboard, and we have not initiated any collection at this time.
Well, I've also gotten several complaints about the condition of Flagler Drive. And I know once we finish the old City Hall site, we'll be able to look at repaving it because there's a lot of potholes and stuff, and even on the south end as well. Need to look at that.
So, if we could make sure that as we do this and work is being looked at, that we communicate with the public.
Gosh, what a novel idea.
I know. I mean, given our backlash-
They are so good at that. They have their own person who does that.
And, so, I just wanna make sure, so that there is an engagement as to what's happening and what you're looking at and what the goals are. It's, 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 it's good stuff, but it can be perceived, obviously, in a different way.
Understood.
Yeah. Thank you.
I don't know if you, if you realize this, but Larry Gans is assigned full-time to engineering. So he's doing all of the outreach work with that. And has had a really great reception from people all over the city. So, Commissioner Shoff, I saw your hand on.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to clarify. I know we have it written up here on the screen, but we're talking about Flagler Drive north of, of the bridge, excuse me. And, you know, there's been, been several projects that have been clearly communicated, thank you very much, with the members of the community, specifically north of the Palm Beach Lakes area, on the projects that will be occurring. And I too have received a lot of feedback about the condition. And so, to the extent that that can be addressed, it would be appreciated. But again, I know we would like to be looking at, at a holistic plan that includes bicycle connectivity, which is really, really important to some of the north-end communities. So, thank you for your engagement there.
Mr. Kelly, did you want to?
No, I was here for the next one.
Commissioner?
Neri.
Whatever your name is.
It's all good. But I did want to add, Mayor, that Larry specifically has, for District 2, and I'm sure the entire city, but I know for District 2, it's made such a difference in terms of his updates, both at the community meetings, on our neighborhood app. As I, it's hard for me to keep up with that, but I go in and I see questions and, and within probably an hour or two, Larry's commenting and saying, "Here's the update on Cumberland." And so, that's been very, very helpful to me. So, thank you.
Good job, Larry. Commissioner?
To that point, I was actually gonna ask if, if maybe Larry could give a presentation at some point to tell us the efforts that he does or the measures that he takes so that we're aware of what he's doing. And to that same end, I don't know if there's a specific way that each of the commissioners might get updates in their district of what's going on, if there's public meetings or announcements that are going out in our district. Because I know I get questions sometimes, and it would be helpful if I could just point them to where that information is.
Yeah, we could do a presentation on the whole Communications Department. And we'll make sure you get press releases, because that's pretty much how we communicate. So I, if you're not getting press releases, we'll make sure that you do.
And to add to that, one of the things we're doing is we're actually hiring some consulting help to back up, because obviously, there's a lot of work out there in regard to communications. And we, and, you know, Kathleen does a great job in regard to using her staff, but it's extremely limited. So, we're going to try to not only increase her staff, but also get some consulting backup. So, we actually are gonna be hiring some consulting help, and hopefully, this month. So, that'll be helpful, so we can do, just continue to improve our outreach. There's a lot of projects coming up.
Yeah, and, and I think it'd be good for Kathleen to do a presentation, because we have people working on Vision Zero, we have people working on engineering, we have people working on different pieces of the communication pie, so, yes.
Just follow up, and, and thank you for that, because I think that every year, the, the ways that we are afforded to be able to communicate grows exponentially. And so, it's, it's really great to hear that Larry's reaching out via the Nextdoor app and new technologies, because I think that they're just growing. And, you know, it's not just one place that you go to get your information anymore.
No, no, no. You know, we have someone that's handling social media, and somebody that's handling some other piece of it, so it's, it's very diverse. Okay, any other questions on this? Commissioner James?
Yeah, back to North Flagler. Some concerns I've had is about speeding up in that area. Are we doing any, and I know, I guess the lane diet is part of that, but are we doing any assessment, analysis of speeding? Is there something we do about enforcement?
Part of the data collection is that we need to validate these requests, especially for speeding in that area. You know, Flagler, from the Flagler Memorial Bridge to 26th Street is, in some part, four lanes of traffic. So, there is some areas that we know, that we need to address speed issues. We could put out some speed feedback signs, as we did on Quadril. That's like our first strategy. We tried to do some short-term education, and then we will work with our police enforcement to help mitigate some of that impact. But ultimately, the best way to reduce speed is to change the roadway design itself. And that's the future long-term goals that we're working towards.
That's right. And, Mr. Kelly, you're looking at the speed limit around the city, and particularly in the downtown area?
Yeah, as part of the Vision Zero effort, we're looking at all the speed limits within the city. What we've seen as an effective way of reducing the risk to the, to the public is to actually lower the speed limit. And we're looking at our residential streets, and then also working, and we've already been in touch with DOT and the county in regard to certain intersections, and reducing speed limit in certain key areas within the city in order to make them safer. So that's another thing. But it's complicated, because you have to justify, you know, we have to justify, obviously, what that speed limit is. But we're, we're actively working on that right now.
Commissioner Limer?
Thank you. We were just talking about that right before this session. I've heard growing complaints on South Olive for speed. And so, I know that one of the E's with Vision Zero is enforcement. So as we lower the speed limits, I'm sure we'll have discussion on enforcement, because it will take time for people to realize that that's lower, and just making it lower doesn't mean that people are gonna follow it.
Yeah, and enforcement is always the last resort, because we find that long-term enforcement doesn't, is not always effective. It's effective short-term, obviously, because you get a police presence out there, and then people do it, but then they go back. So, our first, our first way of handling this, best way of handling it is to make engineering modifications where people feel less comfortable speeding. And, you know, that's what we're doing, and it's very effective. And we've proven it's effective to do that.
Well, that's great. Well, I will bring up Flagler Shore, but we know having two lanes on Flagler Drive slowed everybody down, which is exactly what we wanted to see happen. Okay, thank you. Yes?
The Vision Zero is three Es, and the engineering is the longer part, and the piece that takes more, and we're working on that. It's the education piece. I just learned the other day that 25% of all crashes occur in the downtown, and they only represent 7% of the roadway, you know, within the city. So, letting people know that, and that education, and back to Kathleen and her group, getting those data out there to the community. And, you know, we've had a lot of really, I think the next item is gonna talk about that as well, you know, crashes, so.
Well, Tara Applebaum is working with us on that, and if you go on Twitter, she's tweeting that stuff all the time.
Well, and I don't wanna under, you know, we didn't talk about education, but that's really an important part of this. And in that regard, we're advertising, we're gonna be advertising on the 9th that we're having a big safety fair down on the waterfront. It's gonna be huge. We've got classes that we're gonna be putting on for children in regard to the youth, in regard to bicycle safety, and, you know, that, all the various agencies are gonna participate. And it's gonna be really a big, we're gonna pass out 300 helmets to, to kids. So, it's gonna be a big event. We're gonna get you all information. We'd love for you all to participate in this. So, it, it's education, I don't wanna, I wanna emphasize how important education is. It's, it's really important, just as equally as important as the engineering aspects of this.
Great. Okay, let's go on to the second one. Thank you, one. Barry from the Villages, Commissioner Neri?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners and Mayor, I've handed out to you three photos, but I wanna do a quick level set. So this is the area, it's in District 2, along Village Boulevard, really between Palm Beach Lakes and 45th Street. There's about a mile-long stretch of where we once had Australian pines. And if you recall, we removed those Australian pines because, for a plethora of reasons, but they were invasive trees and needed to be removed. So, definitely support that. The project looks really good. It was the right thing to do. What we've noticed is, since we've removed the Australian pines, that there have been two accidents. Both accidents have started on I-95 South along that stretch, and concluded on Village Boulevard, literally. With this last, and I have the pictures attached, the last accident unfortunately took the life of a 25-year-old young lady. And this happened a couple of Sunday mornings ago. And as you can see, literally, the car is on, that's not I-95, that is Village Boulevard. It started, again, the accident started on 95 and ended on Village Boulevard. And the third picture actually illustrates it best. So, in the 20-plus years that I've lived in the Villages, I can't recall a time that a car has even, that there's been an accident and even, you know, came close to the Australian pines. Now that we've removed them, we've had two cars, I think in the last six months, end up on Village Boulevard. One more piece I wanna add to that. We, along with several commissioners on this dais, with the leadership of Whitehall Condominium Association some months back, sent letters to Secretary Dew for a sound analysis, which I believe is the first step with FDOT, Florida Department of Transportation, to put in their budget a sound wall, very similar to what we have along Brandywine in our city. We received back in August of 2018, a follow-up to that sound analysis, and they had determined at that moment that no, no noise barrier, it didn't meet the criteria. What I understand is that that sound analysis took place during a time where the Australian pines were in place. And now that the Australian pines are not there any longer, perhaps a sound analysis would be the first step in a sound wall. So that's the long-term vision, one in which, you know, I don't need to tell you, because if you're working with the state, I'm not sure how long that will take. The reality is, and something that I just wanna bring to this commission and Mayor's attention, is within the last six months, we've had, I don't think any other area in our city, we have I-95 and a city road so close together. Within the last six months, we've had two cars to leave I-95 and conclude on Village Boulevard. And so, it's a, it's a quality of life, it's a safety issue. And one, and again, I, I don't have the answers, but I wanted to level-set with you all and bring it to your attention, and really, you know, maybe seek some sort of support, knowing that the sound wall is a, that, you know, if I could wave a wand, that would happen. But even if that got approved, it would go in the state's, but, I mean, that, that's a long time off, I believe. Doesn't mean we don't advocate for it, but in the interim, we have cars leaving 95 and ending up on Village Boulevard.
I know, and you said that you recently talked with FDOT?
Well, we've, we've got a call into FDOT, particularly after this last event occurred. And I know, this has been discussed in light of the fact that the Australian pines were removed. To bring everybody up to date, part of 45th Street intersection improvements, the city requested, and others requested that a sound wall be included in that analysis. And as the commissioner said, they did that and said it wasn't warranted. We felt that because of the actions of the city in Riviera Beach, participating together, that we came up with a better alternative on 45th Street, and we were discouraged because it was such a, it was such a huge savings in the reconfiguration of 45th Street intersection. And came up with a solution that worked very efficiently, that we felt like, hey, look, can't we just spend some of the savings on other improvements, you know, because it's a quality of life issue in that area? So, we've been, you know, we haven't given up on that yet, but, and in fact, when the Australian pines got removed, I know there was a request, and, and I wasn't at the meeting, but maybe one of, one of the commissioners that's on the TPA could talk, could talk to us about what those conversations were there, and the requests from the TPA, to go back and have DOT reconsider their decision, particularly in light now of the removal of the Australian pines. I don't, yeah.
So, no, have you, have you?
Well, without, let me finish then. What, in light of the additional safety issues that have occurred, particularly this one, we've tried to contact FDOT and haven't been successful in getting an answer, because it's now beyond just the sound issue, it's become a safety issue with the multiple accidents that are-
And if they took the test when the Australian pines were there, can't we encourage them to redo it?
Pardon?
I mean, if they did a sound assessment when the Australian pines are there, it seems that we could encourage them to redo it now that they're not.
Well, that's what we've requested, so.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Ryan, did you want to add?
Yes, thank you. At the last TPA meeting, this was discussed, Secretary O'Reilly was there. He talked about the managed lane study along 95, which did not include 45th to Palm Beach Lakes. And it was at that time that I requested them to relook at the sound wall, because when they had done the work for the 45th Street interchange, it had warrant, they did not warrant a sound wall. So, at that time, I updated them about the Australian pines, and they promised that they would relook at it. After this accident over the holiday weekend, I sent the pictures and a letter to Jerry O'Reilly's office and asked that they relook at it considering the safety. And I believe that it, maybe it's not six months, but there have been three accidents since that first study was done. So I think that with the city's push, we might be able to get them to relook at it quicker.
Well, we'll continue to follow up with DOT.
Commissioner James?
Thank you, Mayor. In the interim, and I can't tell from the pictures, can we, what's the process for getting those steel barriers adjacent to the road that might, are there any there now?
No.
I mean, how, you know, that would seem like an interim, that doesn't take care of the sound issue, and it's not as significant of a barrier as the wall itself. But what would it take to get some of those, you know what I'm talking about, those kind of steel barriers?
Yeah, it's, um, guardrails.
Guardrails, guardrails, yeah.
Yeah, and, and in fact, that was part of our request, is because of the safety concerns, because of the multiple crashes, what is their plans for safety? You know, because obviously, this has not happened just once, it's happened multiple times, to where these cars end up in, on Village Boulevard, which is certainly not a safe situation. So, part of our question to them is, it's not just the sound wall, it's also the safety considerations along that stretch of 95.
Do we have to wait for FDOT to install those?
Yeah, that would be FDOT.
We can't, we can't do anything on their property. It's, it's problematic.
What about adjacent to Australian? Is that our property? Village, I'm sorry, Village.
Well, to Village, yeah. And I don't know, we could look and see how far the right-of-way is, but I don't know that it's gonna help anything. It's not gonna prevent any cars.
Again, it's an interim measure, and if these cars are traversing from I-95 to Village, if we could install something that would hopefully stop them from hitting-
Why can't we have engineering take a look at that?
Thank you.
Yeah? Commissioner Neri?
No, I was, I was-
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the first I've seen these photos, and I've lived along Village Boulevard and run right next to this, and, and passed numerous strollers, seniors. And so, I find this incredibly, incredibly important, as I know my other commissioners do too. I think it would be interesting to see, in the Australian pine situation, if the pines provided a visual barrier that distracted driver, that now drivers are distracted by looking at Village Boulevard, in that if we were able to construct something that just obstructed the view from I-95, from Village Boulevard, if that would solve the issue. So, I guess the, the question is, were there still accidents along this stretch of I-95 when the Australian pines were up? Or have these accidents been stopped by the pines? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't know the answer.
Did you have a question?
I could, yeah, I can answer. I can't speak to the amount of accidents. I'm sure there were accidents. What I can speak to is, there were no cars that concluded on Village Boulevard during that time.
They didn't end up on Village.
No, not one.
They might've ended up tangled into the Australian pines.
Right.
But they didn't end up on Village.
Right.
And I, I think that's my point, is, did the pines stop cars from coming, or are now cars distracted because they see traffic going both ways?
That's a good question.
So, if it's the visual distraction, perhaps there's something that's a temporary measure we could put up just to visually block, that would prevent the accidents in the first place, understanding we can't put up guardrails, the guardrails need to go on the I-95 side, if anything. And I agree with everyone here, you know, the long-term measure is a sound wall, which ends up being a barrier, et cetera. But, you know, I would like to prevent, as I know everyone here would, any of this from happening, period. Thank you.
Well, that's a good question. Let us take a look at that. Good. Anything else? Thank you, Scott. Item number three, wayfinding sign downtown. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering if we could have an update. We had on our agenda the last time, we made some changes to the sign code in citywide, and we talked about wayfinding signs downtown for a number of years. And now that we've got more construction on Clematis, and I was just wondering if we could get an update on that.
We have Mr. Clemente here, we have Mr. Kelly, we have Mr. Ward, so.
Well, let me just say that this is an initiative that involves multiple departments, and it's extremely important. And as you remember, in the mobility study and other studies that have been done, the importance of good wayfinding. And so, there's been a number of things done, and, you know, I think it, probably the most, the best way of addressing this is to allow the individual departments that have been working on this to come forward and talk about what we've done so far, and then we can talk about what the future holds.
Okay, Mr. Ward?
Good morning.
Morning.
For the record, I'm John Ward, I'm your CRA director, and we've got a, a little history lesson we can show everybody that we have done. The commissioner may, commissioners may recall, we had a, we used to have a meeting with all the directors on a weekly basis, and there was always a to-do list, a tickle, tickle, tickling meeting, and, and they would have a list of projects, and it would have-
Oh, tickling going on.
A lot of tickling going on. And there were a list of projects on the thing, and beside it, they had, they had days on it, since someone was assigned to do something about that particular project. And when I got here, five years ago, the, I got assigned a couple of tickling things that had multiple thousands of days beside them the day I sat down in the chair. And one of them was, one of them was trolleys. We couldn't seem to address the trolley issue, so we, we went ahead and moved the ball on that. And one of them was wayfinding, which had been 10,000 days, and-
Wasn't 10,000. It was probably close, though.
But, so I went back and looked at some history for us, and in 2010, literally, we had hired, some, my predecessors had hired AECOM to do a study of, of wayfinding. And at the end of the day, after a lot of presentations and a lot of considerations for designs and that sort of thing, they came up with some concepts. And some of, some of them, as you can see, were a little on the decorative side, and some of them were, were a little more practical. And item number B on this slide shows you the, the sign design that was selected by this commission as, as the primary example of the kinds of signs that you wanted to see on most of the streets. So what we did was, instead of trying to reinvent the wheel, we went out and had those signs manufactured. And, and we sat down with the communications folks and decided that what we would try and do is a first pass at wayfinding, not the ultimate answer. But we figured, well, let's do this. Let's put out 15 or 20 signs, listen to the public, have them tell us where we don't have signs, because we, we were listening to, we needed more signage to get us to Northwood. We needed the downtown obvious signage and that sort of things. And that's all we tried to do, was fix those initial problems, understanding that I'm also constrained to spend money within, inside the CRA. So I couldn't go down, for instance, South Dixie and do things like that. We did, we did, we did things a little outside the CRA in what we perceived to be entrance features, like on Okeechobee. We did some things as you're coming into the city on Okeechobee, and down on Australian too, especially at places like Palm Beach Lakes. We did a series of signs around there, so you could go this way to go downtown, and you could go straight to go to the hospital, or you could go left and, and go to Northwood Road. So, in the interim period, we've done 22, 3, 4, 5 signs out there. So we've done the first pass at this kind of wayfinding sign. And the next conversation that we had was, and of course, back then, they had some suggestions for some more decorative sorts of things. We wanted to do just something clean. They had suggestions that identified, again, the intersections. And again, this is not brain surgery, it's just a matter of finding the major roads and the major intersections into town. So we've clipped off the first several dozen, couple of dozen of those. And then there was a conversation that you had among yourselves about the appropriateness of electronic signs in the city and that kind of thing. And there was also a suggestion that they made for an entrance way feature, in which they had suggested these sorts of tropical things, and also turning, turning the median into a more park-like setting. So in this, it's showing native plants from these five types of settings, and having the, having almost like a swale, and having the water be treated and flow down. I think there's a 10-foot drop between the top of the hill and, and the bottom there. So having them just literally flow down naturally, and having a natural setting for the entrance to the city. And we didn't, we haven't done anything on following up on that, and whether or not it's a good idea is another conversation. So, that's-
Well, and that's a problem, because FDOT is very particular about what we're allowed to do in that.
Well, I think that's probably the reason nothing went forward with it, is, is running into the FDOT thing. And I have to tell you, I exhausted two staff members, and it took over two years to get the 25 signs we got in, because-
It was really difficult, because we had to get FDOT permission to-
Well, FDOT, and the county, and our roads, so every possible, every possible jurisdiction, you have to deal with them. You gotta, you gotta provide them with engineering signs and everything else like that. So it's a real, it's a, it's a challenge to get it done. But we did do the first 25, and we're, you know, with the will of the board, we're, you know, we're prepared to move forward. We haven't gotten a lot of comments on, on the negatives. People were, I think, pleased to see these signs go in. So it's been a, it's been a positive thing. The Northwood merchants are happy, because they've got ways to get folks there, and it's a little clearer now. So, that's where we are.
Thank you.
And then we've had a conversation about what- And then we've had a conversation about what do we do downtown for more clarity and finding stores and, and the pedestrian sorts of things. So there, there's a conversation. And the other conversation is, what do we do about putting up signage that directs people to our parking facilities?
Yeah, we definitely need parking signage.
Exactly. Well, and part of that may be physical signs, and part of it may also be, as we move forward technologically, into doing things like apps, that you come up on your phone and it directs you, in addition to physical signage, it directs you to, to the locations. And that, and, and what's good about things like that is it gets you close to the garage, and then if you can see a big sign, the second part of it, then you'll know where to turn in. So both of those things are in the works. We assigned the, the pedestrian piece of this to the DDA to start looking at those solutions, and you'll recall, there's a, there's a prototype sign out here on the corner of Clematis, that's been sitting out there for a while now, and they've been getting comments on things like that. So I'll let Raphael make comments on.
Raphael? Thank you, John.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, everyone, and for those of you I have not seen yet, Happy New Year. Very quickly, the pedestrian program, pedestrian wayfinding signage program, we went through the process of designing something, got to engineering and realized that that wouldn't work with wind load and the amount of money we could actually spend on it. So we went back, had a tweak in design, have gotten through engineering, we have a green light from them, and it is my hope that our RFP for construction and installation will go, will hit the street by the end of next week. And it's a very simple system. It was designed by a local fabricator, an artist, Mark Fuller. We, I anticipate we can have it installed by summertime.
Great. Thank you.
Any questions?
Okay, questions for any of the three gentlemen? And what about parking? Because we really need to get that parking.
Yeah, well, and that's what I wanted to talk about moving forward, because we actually have a contract now in regard to doing parking, wayfinding for parking, because that was found to be one of the most important things that we could do in regard to the mobility plan, stop people from cruising, make it easier for people to get to their destination, make, you know, give people certainty instead of being, you know, getting lost in, in our downtown. So as, as John mentioned, we are going to be doing some sort of app in conjunction with doing technology, and we're going to be actually coming to you all for, to reappropriate some funding with, which we already have within our budget, to actually start this effort. We're talking about better signage on our garages, we're talking about that, some of the technology we're going to be implementing is that when you drive in the garage, you're going to know where those parking spots are, you know, this is, this technology is, is out there today, and we're going to, we're going to incorporate that into our garages. So, and the wayfinding in order to get people to our garages, and you'll be able to do it either visually through signage, or you'll be able to do it through an app. So we're exploring all of those options, as well as making sure that all this is branded properly, so, you know, that it, we, well, it's well thought out. So we're working together. Again, Kathleen is helping us, you know, put this together and make sure that we do this properly, but we're on, we're on our way on that.
Great, thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, I have nothing, if there's anything else. Commissioner.
Just, I let Mr. Green know, after, it's been four years, I've never missed a commission meeting, but I will not be here the next commission meeting, unfortunately, so I wanted to just.
Will miss you.
I'm sure you'll hold, hold the fort down, but wanted to let you know.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I was just going to say how enjoyable this was. I always appreciate the presentations that we have, but I felt like this was a little bit different workshop, where we were discussing a lot more and having more open dialogue amongst each other. To that point, I don't know if this, in a workshop setting, we've ever had or invited school board members to present to us, and if the mayor and my fellow commissioners would be open to. I, I understand that our school board members have worked with other cities to have presentations on the public schools in the city, and I know that we've all, you know, talked about supporting our public education. Would that be something that you all would be interested in?
Yeah, we, oops, we could look into that. Okay, let me look into it. The, the other thing I want to say is that, you know, we, we go to the commission every other week and ask you for agenda items, and sometimes we don't get any, and sometimes we get one, so if there's something you want to discuss or talk about, put it on the agenda. That's what it's for.
Well, I'd love to then, I guess, propose that for the agenda, for agenda item. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, everyone, we're adjourned.